You and me, honey, for lunch. Um, and hopefully, Ms. Benjamin will be able to be here. But um, I understand Councilwoman Thomas has had the surgery today. I hope we can remember her in our prayers. Speaking of which, I'm gonna go ahead and call this to order and ask you to open us up with prayer, if you would please, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. If you'll bow your heads to him and the Father, Lord God, we just thank you for being God and being God all by yourself. Lord God, we ask right now in your precious name that you would give us insight, Lord God, that you would give us wisdom, Lord God, that you will allow us to communicate in a way that restores the unity, Lord God, and allow us to see you inside of each and every person, Lord God. We just thank you that the city is in your hands, just like the king's heart, and as the rivers of water you turn whatsoeverwhere you will, Lord God. So we say we yield our memories, our bodies, our ourself to you, Lord God. Have us, let us be a leader fitted for your use. And right now, we lift up Councilwoman Thomas, Lord God. We thank you that you have given the doctors their expertise, Lord God. We ask that no incident or accident happen, Lord God, but we just thank you for full recovery, Lord God, and better sight. In Jesus' glorious and precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Um, thank you all for being here with us today. We're going to be reviewing the budget for the nineteen fiscal year nineteen ninety, I mean nineteen nine, twenty nineteen of twenty twenty. Um, just hoping that twenty twenty is not maybe a year of perfect vision for us and so. Ms. LaShaw, do you have your budget listed so you can follow along?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Planning and development. Uh, we have here for director and staff salaries and wage adjustment, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Mr. Thompson's not here, and he said he had a meeting that suddenly came up, and it, hey, Mr. Speed, and um, I don't know, so I don't know if he had to be here, but he may come in at the end. But I am not, have not really had any communication with him about this, so I'm just going to kind of take this, um, on that. Now, don't say the mayor, have you had any communication from the mayor? I haven't about his. Well, given that we don't have Mr. Thompson here, um, or the mayor's not here to give a report or make the request, uh, any request or to answer our questions about these differences, uh, and perhaps they'll come in and and we can talk about it. We're gonna go ahead, we have some of our, um, fundees and our partners, city partners here, that we can go ahead and have their request. Listen, uh, Ms. Wanda Maxwell.
Yeah.
If you could, if you'd like to come up and talk to us, and Mr. Speed, Mr. Speed.
How are you?
It's good to see you.
You too. Happy Friday.
Happy Friday to you too. Okay, we sit here. Well, I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to come before you and just to ask you if you are able to say anything about any of the stuff that we need to do.
Uh, what we have before you is that the city, the city's lodging, lodging fee, which is not a tax, it's a fee that's paid by, um, people who come to stay at hotels that are in the, the center of, uh, Selma City, that we ask that you reinstate the dollar fee that.
Excuse me just a second. Um, Councilwoman LaShaw, I'm gonna invite you to come, and you, Councilwoman Jackson and me, ooh, Mr. Rush, don't you hurt yourself. I can handle you too much. Okay, I'm sorry.
What I give, I keep a big here. Okay, thank you. Um, on behalf of the YMCA, I'm Wanda Maxwell, and this is the Minister, he's our CEO, and we are here requesting the restoration of the lodging fee, which is a fee paid by people who come to stay at the hotels, it's not a tax. We're asking for the restoration of that one dollar, I think that was going to the Selma, um, city YMCA, Selma County YMCA. Um, what we have before you is that we brought proof to show you that we were struggling in the first place, because we would not have come to you having that. But, um, we are, uh, we've moved to a different, different level of struggle, and we are in it, and we don't see our way going forward, um, if we don't get that restored back. Uh, in addition, uh, we are giving services to the community, and I have a student program in which I met with the city of Selma, uh, city school system this morning, and I'm happy to report to you that we service all third graders in the Selma city school system, not Dallas County, but in the Selma city school system, that were on level two. And we tutored them in math and reading, nothing but math and reading, to try and move those students from the level two to level three. And we worked with Ed Wood, Sophia Kingston, um, and the other three schools, only two we didn't work with was Matthew, but we, we worked with all of the elementary schools. And we moved them literally from level two to level three. Now, I know that's not a big deal, maybe to you all, they were not in education, but that's huge for the Selma city school system. So their request to us today is that not only we work with fourth graders, but that they add two grades, third, fourth, and fifth graders. And we're willing to work with all those students in the school system who are on level two, to move them to level three, which makes a difference in the school. That's just one example. Um, in addition, we host basketball that is just for the good of the community. We service, um, and, and, and when I say basketball, it's huge, our basketball program is huge. When I say to you that we service our, um, uh, seasoned citizens, I don't like to say senior, but seasoned citizens, we service almost six hundred, and that's a large number, um, under our silver sneakers, and then other than that, we also have another category of seniors. Um, what we do is we have warm pools that can do exercise, and it's for the improvement of their health, and that is a huge expense to us to have a warm pool for senior or seasoned citizens to be able to do exercise that they've been instructed by their, um, physician to, to work out. Uh, in addition to that, we have a plethora of activities in terms of our own personal, um, of people who come and exercise for health. We work with health and wellness. In fact, Mr. Speed, which hopefully he will tell you a little bit more about it, we received a, a very small grant to work with, um, our citizens on health and wellness, because you know, Selma City, uh, is very high on, uh, in terms of high blood pressure, high cholesterol.
Obesity.
Obesity, uh-huh, all of that, uh-huh. We're, we're one of the worst in the nation. And so, we're, we're working with that frantically. We've also partnered with the Michael Johnson Foundation, we're putting on a fall festival this year, and we did it previously, and it worked out great well. We also put on a back to school bash where we gave our, oh, thank you, thank you, see, these are our partners.
Oh, I know.
These are our partners. Thank you so much, Art, for that. Um, we also, um, had a back to schools, uh, event that serviced almost a thousand young people. And I don't know whether you all remember, this was just a few months ago, but we gave out supplies, we gave out, uh, you know, all kinds of book bags, all of that through the Michael Johnson Foundation that we're working with. Um, we're also, uh, working, and then I'll turn it over to him, but let Mr. Speed talk a little bit, and then I'll talk back again about the project.
I think our biggest challenge is, in any Y structure, membership is the economic engine that drives the YMCA, and that's relevant for us. Um, as I shared last time with the council, we're holding strong in our membership units, about fifteen hundred, and that typically is a makeup of, uh, families, senior, couple, considered one unit. The challenge is when you look at units versus revenue, they're two different things. Our seniors are the biggest population, but when a senior reaches a certain age and is qualified through their insurance company to roll off in a membership to get silver sneakers, that price point changes drastically. Three hundred and five dollars a swipe, if they're coming on, as opposed to a monthly bank draft.
Forty-nine.
And so, we're beginning to see our revenue beginning to slip. Now, part of the Y's claim to fame is that we have a financial assistance program, so we never turn anyone away due to an inability to pay more everybody, all, to, to be a part of the YMCA. That's becoming more challenging as well. And so, it's, um, putting the Y into our straits, because now we're having to make decisions to receive people, um, versus keeping the lights on, paying staff to provide the service. So, these are some of the challenges we've been facing as of late, and certainly, having those lodging fees reintroduced would certainly help us continue the work that Mr. Maxwell mentioned, and the work that we have slated to do, that we've not yet begun yet, and there's so much we can do. And so, um, that would really, truly, I think, benefit us and kind of rightsize, um, the services that we're, we're trying to drive.
And we have a, and we have a strong heart for service. That, that is what we do. We have a call to serve our whole community. And the Y is a bright spot in Selma. It's one of the few places where a person who has a challenged income, Y might be next to a person who is well-to-do, and they're both enjoying the same kind of, 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 I don't know what's the benefit.
Benefit. No one who comes to the Y, even if they get financial assistance, they don't have a rent paid on the full rent.
They don't know, no one knows that.
Uh, everyone comes and gets the potential to recreate, workout, and have access to it.
And we, and we are, we, we have been challenged in the past, and we are still challenged, but we're more, more subtle, and technically, we wouldn't have to close the doors if we don't get it back. And we have the financials, if you, you know, wanna look at the.
We did have an audit just completed.
And that's the most, that's the, that's, that's the most important. This is an audit, and as you know, um, the, the paragraph at the end of the audit is that there is a growing concern, and whenever you have an audit and it has a growing concern.
That's the most standing evidence we have, is that we're an ongoing concern, and so, yeah, that's, that, that's real.
And we have cut back, I mean, we, we've cut back to, to, to better balance. I mean, we, we were not, I mean, we didn't overhave a, an abundance of staff in the first place, but we have cut back to better balance. And we have a lot of people that are just helping because they know that Selma needs the Y. We are a community that if we lose the Y, it's like losing the hospital, or the, uh, you know, the library, or so forth and so on, because we are essential to the health of the community. Whenever any companies or anyone wants to come to Selma, one of the first things they want to see is your YMCA, your hospital, and your library. Um, so we are an essential player in the community, and we want this order, and we've been doing so, and we've been serving, uh, with very, very little compensation. And other communities, when, uh, when the, the idea of the lodging fee came up, it was a model. This is what other cities use to help infuse and to keep their Y going. One of the good premises about Selma is that we don't have several, we just have that love Y, and it's a beautiful facility, and we have been serving the community now for thirteen years, uh, out of that facility. And, uh, service is what we are, and what we are about. Um, do you have any questions, or would you like any, any, if you needed to.
I would like to.
I, I'm gonna make some comments, and I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
I've had some people ask me some questions that are, that have been, I believe they've been swatted to, to validate something that, that they want to believe. But anyway, first of all, Wanda, you know how much I love.
Of course.
You know, the Y and its mission. Um, and, and I'll, and, and the, the Y, I remember, I was on the city council, when Y board members came to us and said, we are looking at the Y, and I think it was Greenville and the Y, and several other places, that when they fell into, to part the natural house, when they became economically challenged, this is what they did in working with their cities, and it worked beautifully. So, the YMCA did not come to us for a bailout. They came to us essentially to be a fiscal conduit, to, and it wasn't like they said just collect extra monies for us. They, that, you all offer a service to the hotels and motels that do this. It's not like you just, and this is real common when I was at Auburn. They did that as well, and they have like five percent lodging tax.
And they're rich.
And they're right here in the house, just in Auburn. And so, um.
And they utilize, the people from the hotels, they use, you know.
Right.
The citizens to, to check in, uh, from out of town, they use the facility.
Right. And, um, that, so, and they have, have availed themselves of the Y. Um, so, you know, I really wanna stress, I, I remember that, you know, I remember that since day one. You all didn't come with your hand out. You came with the idea and a partnership and something in the offering. It was something for something.
And it's not a tax.
Right, it's not a tax.
It's for citizens, so.
Right. It's, it's not, it's a, I mean, it's, it's called, and so, that, I like that. And I like the way that you all partner with other, we have got to avail ourselves of partnerships more.
Look, it's not a dirty word.
Right, no, it's not. And, and that's the way that we are able to broaden our ability to serve our constituents in a, in a bigger way, when we partner with people and lend resources.
And we're busting children in, that was the other thing. And you all know that I came here, what, three, four years ago, with the dream of trying to bust children in, and that was the key, when Dr. Agnes Williams came in, and she said, I wanna do this, I wanna do this. And that's when the partnership was formed, and we literally, those children that we service, we bring them here. And we, we are facilitating feeding our children after school with a healthy meal. We also, like I said, we bust them in so that they can have the experience of the Y, because part of the learning process, especially in, in an underserved community, is the exposure of taking children from an environment that they would not necessarily have that experience, and bringing that to them. And it is a beautiful, happy place, you know, you walk in, you look at the view of the pool and all of that, and then you look on the other side and you see it for the little bitty babies, you know, the, 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 the area, uh, where we can keep little babies. But it's, it's, it's a happy place, and it's a good place, and it is literally one of the bright spots.
It is. And I, and I hope to see, you know, there is so much potential for growth. I want to see the soccer fields used more and growing more. At, listen, the soccer fields are mine. I started the soccer field thing, I wrote the grants, I did, you know, I, I love that, and I, and I hope we can pick that up and promote soccer more in Selma, because I don't think people here realize what a big deal soccer is in other places, and what a growing concern it is at places. And it just offers people who aren't, you know, aren't big sports nuts in, you know, in football and basketball and baseball, it gives.
Easy sport.
Right, and it's, and it's something for everybody, it's another option. Um, and I, I do, you know, love that, and I have a question also.
And she had bring money in to, to, to actually create.
Oh, yeah, I did. I, I did some grants for the Y. I did the soccer grants, and I did, I wrote the lottery grant for the Niren, I wrote the, um, grant for the soc, for the Coca-Cola Funda, or the Beverage Foundation, yeah. And I wrote the, um, for A and F, and I wrote the, um, uh, the Claire Weaver Parish Grant to get the initial.
Thank you. Wow, okay.
And we depend on that. Thank you. I didn't realize that.
Oh, you didn't, not, but anyway.
I didn't realize that. That's our biggest infusion at the end of the year, is that, uh, uh, Weaver Parish. Actually, it is a lifeline. There are two things that's a lifeline to us, is that Weaver Parish and, um.
Yeah, I do. In fact, it's, it's up here, it's up here on this computer, right here, the initial line is on this computer up here.
Thank you.
But what, um, and there are some, some other, I hope that one day, when I have some more time to kind of just sit and do things like that, I can do some, some other things. When I get going, I can, can do, um, sort of things that aren't that complicated. Anyway, I have a pointed, uncomfortable question to ask, but it's something I've been asked from my, my friends, um, in the area. I have been asked by some of my friends that, about Ms. Walker, um, or Johnson of Ebony Lane, um, about that they, the claim is, or the understanding is, and you may be able to help with this, Councilwoman, that, um, the family, that, that the, the reason that the pledge wasn't paid was because they thought, that, that she thought that they were going to build the Y in midtown.
Don't.
Like where, and I, and, and I, it's my understanding that the whole, but because the land was donated by the Jones family, and they knew where it was going to be, first of all, the infrastructure in town would not support, you know, that, I need, they want that.
And I'm happy to speak to that. Actually, I have pictures, and if I had just known that was gonna come up, I would've brought jet. Not only is that absolutely not true, Ms., Ms. Walker Johnson, and sometimes I think it's better to just say Ms. Johnson, 'cause people forget who she really is, so this is the owner of Ebony and Jet. Okay, so she was born in Selma, for historical point of view, and her father was a practicing physician, and then if you all were born here, your parents were probably delivered by Dr. Walker. Okay, so, she donated, made, made, made a pledge and donated over five hundred and thirty thousand dollars before she died. Not only was the, that was when the pledge, that, that's when the pledge stopped, when she died. She came to the Y. We have pictures of her standing in front of the Y. It never even was a discussion that it would be built anywhere but where it is. That is, that was her desire. We had, we had, we had a whole, um, uh, Eunice Johnson Day for her, to welcome her to Selma, uh, to Selma. And I have the pictures to prove it, and I can come back and bring the jet, 'cause I have a, the jet, because not only was, uh, the mayor, the, the city council president, and a whole plethora, the whole city council was at the ceremony, and they did a whole spread of jet, so I have pictures with her in front of the YMCA, the current YMCA, so that is not true. She died, and that's when the pledge was unable to be the finishing of it, but by far, Ms. Johnson donated more money than anyone in the whole world to, uh, sell the YMCA. Now, there are other people who didn't complete their pledges also, who are walking around, who are living. And, of course, that's a part of the problem too, is those pledges, but it's nothing we can do about those.
Right. Well, and also, in all fairness, we had that terrible economic downturn.
We did.
In two thousand seven, two thousand eight.
That's right.
And, you know, we had, we just haven't recovered.
That's right.
From it, and, um, so.
That's right.
That's just, that's, that's part of the, the issue.
That is part of the problem. That is part of the problem. And historically speaking, um, her love was great for Selma, because she was sick then, but all she wanted to do was to come to that Y, her name is sake, take pictures there, and then we went to Selma University, where her parents taught, and then we went to her home house, the house that she was born in.
Well, I, what my, that, what I really wanted to get to, to clear up, and I wanted to know for myself, was she misled?
No.
About the location of the Y?
No, I have pictures with her, and I can bring those back. In fact, when I leave here, I can go home, bring the jet back, so you can see her with the pictures.
Well, I trust you, I know, but that's, I, I, I just was concerned, because there was some other.
That is absolute.
That's fair.
And thank you.
That's fair.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about Ms. Johnson. Also, let me just add a little caveat about her. Ms. Johnson is the same lady, we call her Eunice Walker Johnson, but it's Ms. Johnson, that's what we're used to, who owned Ebony and Jet, and who was over Ebony Fashion Show. She brought Ebony Fashion Show to Selma, Alabama for thirty years, and she gave to this community over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of scholarships that we don't talk about, because we get so lost up in, in, in the Y and whatever. But not only that, if you do the research, she brought those same shows all over the country. She infused into this country over three million dollars of donations. Now, that's fact. That's not what I'm saying, and I know, because Alpha Kappa Alpha was the conduit to bring her here for the thirty years she came. And she gave us half of the proceeds, and you remember, it was packed. You all remember?
Absolutely.
At, 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 uh, School of Discovery, it was packed. She gave us half of those proceeds, and that's, we have still benefited. Our group is still benefiting from the over hundred and fifty thousand dollars that she infused in just Selma, but nationwide, over three million dollars. In fact, she's the, one of the largest philanthropic givers in the entire country, in the African-American community.
I was just thinking, boy, that, that wonderful land.
That's right. And thank you for asking, because I needed to say that the history needs to be revised, because not only did she contribute, her father delivered almost every baby, uh, African-American child that was over seventy years old that are here, most of them were delivered by Dr. Walker, her father, and her mother taught in the public school system.
Well, that's a thing that just doesn't need to be.
That's right, that's right.
Well, thank you all for asking. Uh, Councilwoman, Councilman?
The agreement that was, uh, given to give half of the lodging tax to the Y ended this past February.
Yes, sir.
Uh, that amount of money that the Y ceased to receive probably has a negative impact to your operation.
Oh, my gosh.
So.
I'll let you tell, I'll just say.
So, so I think.
Strong mistake.
And of course, the other half of that lodging went to the Brown. And of course, Mr. Speed.
Yes, sir.
You did inform that the Brown facility has been donated to a nonprofit organization.
With, with the process. Veterans, uh, administration.
Yes, sir. Maybe that portion of the lodging tax we could put into our capital equipment budget, but I do support, uh, reactivating the support for the Y.
Thank you, sir.
I think the concept of allowing city employees to be ad hoc members.
Absolutely.
To take advantage of their fitness, which will immensely impact their, uh, medical insurance.
Oh, I know.
So, uh, once again, you know, I think that whatever we do, the council does to help, the Y will be, uh, moneyless, man.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions. You've told us, uh, this question in, in, on more than one occasion, what you're doing with the children in the public schools. How is the public school system partnering? How are they contributing?
Well, okay, let me tell you. The public school system is challenged too, you know, they don't have an excess of money. So, what Dr. Williams and I did when we got together, we said, well, how can we help each other? Because, you know, I had this hunger to bust children in who would not necessarily get an opportunity. So, she said, okay, well, why don't we see if we can form a, a, a program that would tutor, but would help? Then she went back on her own and did the research, 'cause she had to look at the data, and she said, okay, well, these are the students that might be able to benefit the most, those on level two, because that means that they are not the, that they're not the bottom, which is level one, but they're not three or four, but there, there might be, those children might be the, the, the ones most likely to be able to move to three. So she went back and did her research. Then we got back together, and then she said, well, why don't we do it this way, instead of just, uh, you know, trying to use a bus? 'Cause I, the first thing I asked was, can I use your bus? 'Cause I knew she had a bus, so can I use it? So she said, well, okay, why don't we do it this way? And then I went back and, you know, talked with our people, and said, well, okay, we got the facility, we got the room. And then I went back and, you know, talked with our people and said, well, okay, we got the facility, we got the room, we got the, um, the computer room that's, um, right behind, you know, you might not know, but it's, you know, right across from the community room. It's a, it's tucked in the back, it's computer room. And we said, well, okay, how can we take advantage of that and use our resources and your resources but yet not spending money? Okay, so it was about resource to resource. So, but I, and I'm, I'm, I'm jumping up and down. Okay, gosh, this, this is the blessing that we've been, what we've been praying for. If they bust the kids there, we have a, a volunteer teacher there who will then use the curriculum based on what the city is. Because see, we're using their curriculum, see? So it's not made up. That's why it works. The first time, because last year was the first time we did this. It was an experiment and it literally worked. And it worked in every one of the schools. And believe it or not, I was talking to Dr. Ford, Ozella Ford, who is the assistant to Dr. Williams. She said that the biggest, because I was so excited about it because that was the first one I heard about. But she said the biggest increase was actually in, at Clark. So, so every school showed a, 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 a jump, every school. And that's unusual to get data. First of all, pre-data and then post-data, that actually shows you a, an increase. And that, that was, that was just really exciting. You know, I know you all don't know about my background, but I'm a, you know, whatever. But anyway, that was really exciting to me because we were really able to help children and in a measurable way. Because I like the service delivery model. Have an issue, have a problem, come up with a solution and then test and be able to show that you made an improvement. I don't like just, okay, I'm going to come here and I'm going to read to kids. I mean, I like that. But what we wanted under, under our leadership was to be able to have a measurable difference.
Evidence. And, and I hear, um, what you're saying, um, and the measurables are awesome. The question that I'm asking is, you're helping and, and your data has shown that because your facility initiated this project that has helped the students, how are they helping you with funding? I, I understand what you're saying, resource to resource, but I also understand that they have resources for after-school programs that could possibly be invested or opportunities for grants that could be, um, you could be a provider for, a, a service provider for. So how are we doing that? Because the resources are good, but if you, if this doesn't pass, your doors close and the resources are not available to the children that need it so much. So how are, how are they contributing? Like the city itself, we've, we've shown that we're partners. You're providing our employees with benefits and then we're supplying you with the benefit. So you're providing their children with benefit, our children of the community with benefit. So how are they benefiting you other than the warm, uh, good feeling that you have knowing that you're putting them on a greater level because the finances is at the core?
Well, okay, like we said, it wasn't a dollar for dollar. And, you know, they're providing the teacher, not at the same rate, but a teacher who is willing to volunteer. So, so the service is coming from them, the teacher and the curriculum. So what they're putting in is the curriculum and the teacher. And I know it doesn't sound like money, but that's big, that's big because.
So you're saying they provide in-kind services?
That's right. They're, they're providing in-kind. But it's huge because you don't have a lot of evidence that just tutoring actually moves the needle. But we're, we're, we're teaching them based on the need in math and the need in reading. And for our children, and even though, you know, I, both my children are born in Dawn and I have two grandbabies now. But for our children, I call them my, you know, my children, our children, for our children, that's a huge need and a, and a huge space. And I guess in my heart, there is a dollar figure and their dollar is the, the in-kind. But that's huge because you don't get that. That is probably a model that's going to be repeated in other communities now since we see that it really does work.
I, I have one other question. I would like to say if we could look at, um, some funding opportunities. I know that I've seen several grants, I mean, just locally, that provides money for after-school, um, programs and things of that sort. Um, that I, that I think would be beneficial. The back, the community group, when they do theirs, um, most of them are about education. That's what we're doing with the children. I think it's like twice a year, uh, the most is like five thousand, but that's ten thousand dollars.
Children's Trust Fund.
Children's Trust Fund, yeah, for state agency. I mean, they're, they're, we know grants can't take you, but they sure can assist you.
And, and layered funding is the key because there's not.
Especially for services that you do.
And you got data to prove and outcomes to show that this is something.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and the days.
In addition.
Really of the real big, huge. Are, well, pretty much, you have to really dig. But, um, with the layered funding. But one day, one day, I, I tell you what, we need to call Tracy Plummer, um, and get her to come by and talk with us at the Y. Because she is the deputy director at the Children's Trust Fund and she's from Selma. And she can help you. Because we could really get, she could help you get the cap into the big money for some well, well-needed program. And, and they do fund programs through the YMCA. They fund through the Y in McGowan. I happen to know that because I used to write grants, school grants for the Children's Trust Fund.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, and I mean, they do, but so.
And I, and I hope so. We're working a partner with, um, with the.
Yeah, and, and, um, yeah.
Our, our policy council receives several grants from, you know, children's policy council. But I think that, that would be great, the Children's Trust Fund. And like she says, layered. Um, and the other thing, do you all have any fundraisers you hear about?
Yeah, we're in the middle of it now. We're kicking off in October. Uh, and it is, uh, yes.
Oh, you don't want to let us know yet?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Please, that's what we do.
After the fall festival.
The fundraiser.
And also proceeds will go to us for that.
And so you're doing this several times.
Yes, and we're just starting to support the Y and we kicked off in October, but we've already started it. And we're already contacting people now. Yes, we have to do that out of actual, we have to do that operation. We have to. And last year we did about twenty-seven, uh, and we're hoping to do more than that this year.
I don't know why I want to do that.
There, there may be some, um, the Office of Children Justice and Delinquency Prevention. There are some prevention funds, um, federal grants that you can get because, um, we don't have a board in here. But this is the closest that you have. Preventive services, I don't know, would be absolutely awesome.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the Y is going to be one of the.
The last, the last thing I'll say, not to hold the meeting too long, is, um, my mom and aunt are both a couple of those senior citizens that enjoy the pool. You know, you saw me picking up, um, Julie.
Absolutely.
And, um, this summer. And so we, we, we try to utilize it. They don't let me work out the way I need to.
I don't work out the way I need to.
Oh, yeah, well, I do. That's why I look like a Michelin tower. Tower stack. But, look, the Y is the only intergenerational place. I mean, I know there are other workout places, but the Y is really the only one from babyhood to death's door. You know, that you see people, you know.
Mountain Butterfly almost did her last, you know, real going out at, at the Y. She, 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 um, her, one of her claims was that it really extended her life, um, that pool.
Miss Melvin, oh, drop this.
That warm pool. That warm pool, yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, did you, did you do the redevelopment?
Well, yeah, I'm just prepared because I know you all are, are challenged for time. But, uh, right now, the, uh, Southern Redevelopment Authority is working with Design Alabama and, uh, most of you all were there. Uh, what we did was we brought into the community, uh, landscape engineers, uh, architects, uh, landscape architects, um, Alabama Historical Commission and several other, uh, entities that are experts in helping to draw up what a downtown would look like. The good news is that we asked the community for a huge buy-in to come in, give us ideas of what you want. Um, we would, you know, determine that, uh, we're not going to tell Selma what it wants. We want Selma to tell us what you want. And so we had a whole wall full of ideas. And so they took those ideas catalog and they're going to come back, probably in November, with a completed digital report. And then it's up to us to try to find someone who can actually print the design because that was basically Brad's work. All we did was pay for the logistics of it, but not actually the expertise of it. But that goes back to, uh, our other person that we've been working with, Alyssa Miranda from the University of Alabama. And, um, with that, the, the immediate past, um, mayor of Prattville, um, Jim Boyer. They all said, because SRA was working with this, this is why they would give us the grant for Design Alabama. And this could be huge. Um, I don't know whether you've noticed it, but we don't look so, you know, pristine. But this could be a way to help. In addition, we went before the county commission, um, asking them to be a partner. I'm also a big partner person, huge member. And, uh, they're, 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 uh, going to partner with us with what we want to call, um, facade enhancement. And so, yeah, yes. And so I'm really excited, but I don't want to let the bag out of the hat yet. Let them, you know, we want them, we want their, this is their baby too. So, but anyway, that's upcoming. And our big thing is that we're working with Opportunity Zones. And we have hosted, uh, Chef Dominic and talked to All in One and hosted Mark Smart with ideas. And we're trying to get them to think about actually coming to the downtown area. Because now, of course, we as an entity, our whole thing is around retail. We're not the EA. We're just to work with, with, with retail and to try to make the quality of Y look better and be better for people who, who work in Selma so they all want to live in Selma. So, what we are trying to do is before we go to try to ask people from out, see what we can do with the citizens who are here, who have businesses and who have ideas and so forth and so on. And we have a wonderful committee of Mr. Johnny Moss Jr., Mr. Clint Wilkerson, and Mr. Attorney Billy Young, who are working with our, they're, they're our Opportunities Zone committee. And they're, they're, uh, mapping out all of the properties. And also, and I want to thank, uh, you all for considering and you're going to formally ask the governor to increase the Opportunities Zone because it's not big enough. It's only a sliver and it needs to be larger. But, um, hopefully with Alex Swaxford, who has worked with us, he's the one that's kind of working with him. He'll be able to, once we identify and we get the buildings, we feel like will work. Hopefully, he'll be able to bring in some investors to invest in. So that's, that's what we're working on. And of course, we're all volunteers and we're looking to add a community advocate on the payroll to help us. Because, um, in Selma, you're challenged to get people with the expertise to really help you do what you want to do. But what the model we are suggesting to our funder, EFA, is that we have a community advocate, a, a community advocate, uh, that will come in and help us. And then we use the rest of our, our resources to get in consultants like Design Alabama, like Alyssa Miranda, University of Alabama, like whoever, koozie, 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 whoever, uh, to come in to help us do what we want. And we do need that person to be a person that has a vibrant personality and who loves to really work with all people to try to make us look beautiful. Um, so.
Can I have that conversation with you?
Yes, yes. And thank you all.
He said he's coming today.
Really? Because you have that vibrant personality, right? Absolutely. But anyway, these are all our, our dreams and our prayers and our goals. And thank you for allowing us to, to bite your ears off. So I have another meeting.
Let, let me just say real quickly on that, the Opportunities Zone thing, the council did sign a resolution about our recommendation. Um, and I'm hoping that the council can also, uh, uh, and I expect that there will be also funding for the city and entities to do some preparation for those to, there is some real primary, like particularly Arsenal Place.
That's right.
That I hope that they will be using the, will be using the Municipal Improvement Act.
Yes.
To have some people, get some encouragement for some people to sell.
That's right.
Uh, to, to unload these properties that are perfectly good, structural properties. Like this. Yeah, trees rolling out all over. But anyway.
And the other side of Broad Street, and the other side of Broad Street.
Yes, ma'am.
And, you know, we, we need to try to, because I can personally say that we would not have a beautiful facility we have if it were not for the entire of it. And so they really do work, those type incentives, they really do work. But we got to get it ready.
Yes. Thank y'all so much for coming. And I know that this wasn't very deep notice and I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming today.
I came out too long and you came out too early.
Okay, let's see. Woo. Now, don't shock me with about Selma's station. Okay, all right. Becky Youngwood.
My, this is my girl.
Hi, Becky.
All right, so our new park, well, yeah, we're building, we're getting started on it last year. I want to say one of the things we've most recently accomplished, we've done a beautiful park, which is free and open to the public. We've got all of our insurance that are now, so we have liability insurance. And so we're going to try to open this space every day in the morning, kind of like out of the center, open in the morning and close at night. And so we had yoga there this past Saturday, the first day of the month.
Oh, man.
And we had a sidewalk chalk competition out in Bryant. Um, so the set pocket park has just been a great addition to the area. We intend to, we're going to do a chalkboard wall on one of the walls. We got a quote of ten thousand dollars, so we're going to come up with something different, probably just paint a smaller. And the back wall is going to be a Trump law mural so that looks like you're going into it. And then the left wall will be an artifact wall. We're still in the process of doing all that. Buying a grant to, um, work on some one thousand.
Oh, actually, yeah, you say that word.
Is that better? Can you hear me? Can you hold this?
Yes, there's somebody, yeah.
Is that better? Okay. All right, so the next thing we're about to embark on is a QX space. It's four thousand square feet that backs up to the gallery. Um, it is going to bring employment. It's going to be a communal art space for six to eight people will have workspace. Or if a person wants to come in and do, well, we have an event plan, so we can have welding workshops, we can have line class workshops. We can have, if a basket weaver wants to come and rent out a space, it's going to be minimal rent. So we encourage artists to bring their stuff in and hopefully eventually sell their wares in the gallery. Um, in addition to that, though, the reason, um, we're going to provide, uh, a low rent, but in exchange for that, we're going to expect some to go into the schools or to offer a workshop to the local children. Um, another project we have coming up that we've just partnered with the Lanes and we go to RB Hudson, we're going again in November. Going to RB Hudson, um, to the new, it's the same program as the art class that they just started. Um, and, um, we met with Danielle Waden and the instructor, Mrs. Reynolds, um, yesterday. And, um, we're going to, my new intern, Carrie Towne, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to meet him, he's wonderful. Anyway, he's our new intern at Art Drive and he's, he's brought a wealth of knowledge. And, um, we used to be a volunteer run organization, we now have four employees with the create space. We'll have another employee. Another thing that we have going on is nine oh seven Water Avenue. We have a potential tenant that's going to move in in November. And that will be more tax revenue and more, there'll be sales tax. I can't talk about who it is yet because it's not, it hasn't transpired, but we're going to, um, renovate that space. So that will bring in, so that's just another building on down. So we did, as you said, layered funding. So, um, I think that that's the main things I wanted to talk to y'all about. Oh, another thing we have, we're going to have a tenant day tomorrow at, uh, on one thirty-six Mack C Street. And it's going to be with, partnering with Cougar Oil, an art lab. I'm going to open, eventually open an art shop for the neighborhood children in these areas. So that's a lot going on. But, um, if y'all could just consider a little funding, that would be awesome to help us continue the progress.
The level funding is twenty-five hundred dollars with all that you all do with G T.
Yeah, I think they'd like to ask for five, but they know that we're cash drought.
Say try to be reasonable. I understand y'all are.
Thank you.
Having a hard time, but we want to keep the ball rolling if we can. And it's going to generate income for the city as we add the new, um, retail space that's located at nine oh seven Water Avenue. We've got to renovate it. We have put in an H X system insulation, new lighting, LED. LED lighting. We have a lot to do to get it there, but we're going to try to get it done by November 1st, so we can move in.
Wow.
So, thank you for your consideration. Do y'all have questions?
Thank you for the work you do.
Yes, yes, thank you. And you're doing an excellent job.
Awesome. It's great being part of a hardworking organization.
Well, and I tell you, Art Revival is certainly shining star for Selma right now. It's in my heart, and it's everybody's heart on the board, so.
It's definitely growing.
It is. Can you tell me about it? And I love that it's so inclusive and that anybody can go.
Art is a level playing field.
It is.
Doesn't matter what gender you are, what age you are, what color you are, it is, art is appreciated by.
It's the great equalizer.
It really is. And it's been a great event last night, our new intern Carrie Fountain, we had an art show welcoming him to Selma. And we had an awesome turnout, and it couldn't have been more first, it couldn't have been more well attended. It's just a wonderful event. And it's truly a testament to how the community does react to the arts in general. It's an embodiment of this there. So, any other questions?
She's back there, she's back out there a lot. Relationship because of the name. But I didn't know how for.
She's married to, oh, this song.
Is that the Anis D? R?
Yes, yes, Anis D. for y'all?
Yeah, he's put me on the corner of the town.
What do you are?
That's great.
He's good.
He is good.
Okay, thank y'all for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate y'all supporting our events and stuff. It's been, but we've been several times sometimes.
And thank you for letting us.
And I'm coming.
Good. Again, Art, we have a jazz event coming up October 3rd. It's going to be Thursday, October 3rd. We have 10 different jazz musicians coming and 10 different artists. And they're going to be staying, we're promoting, we're paying for their lodging and everything. And they are going to be here October 3rd. And we're having a VIP reception on the front end, so people can come and meet musicians and artists and everything. The following week, we have Telltale, and also along with that, we have Telltale in the schools. We have grown that program from last year, we did nine sessions in the public school, so this year we're going to have 13. And so Carrie and I are going to split up and take the two Telltale's into all the, I've worked with, I was with all the city schools, we've started with the city schools. And we've added two at the library this year, which one of those is going to be Craig, and the other one I think might be Sophia Kingston. But the other elementary schools, we're going into those. And then we're going to also do School Discovery, Selma High, Brantley, it's 13 sessions. And so that is a red grant for that. And so we're going to do, actually, we're at two grants for that. So that's free for the children. And I'm telling you, when I did it last year, it was not very comforting, I did it in 2018. So, because the children, when you see a belly laugh like that for 30 to 45 minutes, and you think, I mean, I literally got tears in my eyes, and I thought, when is the last time they laughed this hard? I mean, just belly laugh. It was so awesome and rewarding. And then at the end, it was so surprising, some of the schools, you know, had one really country guy and one really funny guy. And so just they engulfed with him with hugs and have pictures of him, it was the most amazing. It was great. It was so rewarding. And anyways, so we're looking forward to expanding that this year. We have a busy October. And then we're bringing the truth booth back, which was an interactive art exhibition that we had at the foot of the bridge last September. It's free to the public, and people went, we actually hosted it for four different stops across the Black Belt. We went to Union Town, York, and then one in Mississippi, and then in Selma, and Art Revival spearheaded that and got the grant money for that. So we are partnering with them again, and we're going to have a screening of all, so wait, the truth booth was, it's like this big white bubble. And you walked into the truth booth and it prompted you, the truth is. And so you had a couple of minutes to say whatever you wanted. You could say, the truth is, I hate my life. And you could say whatever you wanted. But standing outside of the truth booth and seeing the people come out with smiles on their faces, I know that it's going to be a really positive screening. So he's taken this artist from Mexico, Jim Reynolds, he's taken all of these, these little, all of the individual truth booth interactions, and he has created one screening for across the Black Belt. So we'll have all the ones from Union Town and York and Selma all kind of mixed in together. And so that will take place in the spray of the public, October 24th, which is also Thursday night at Art Revival.
Could you get the council a calendar?
Calendar, there will be bits.
Yes, and I think we're on the January calendar, but I can get that to y'all. I just need that to you and you distribute.
That I sure will, that'd be great.
I do.
And also, the information on the VIP reception for the jazz thing, so if some people would like to go there.
Yes, pardon my floor, but.
That's okay, yeah, just give them to make, because you need to get home. Thank y'all. Thank you, thank you, Miss Becky. Um, okay, Cheryl Smidley, she told me she had a meeting in Montgomery, probably would not get back. And she will be here to give a report Monday, the work session. It was with some consternation that I saw that she had been taken out of the budget. And I just don't agree with that. I don't know if the mayor is real familiar with all the things that she does. But she has a very good relationship with the people who do tours here. She works very hard, and she goes even on weekends on her own time. She works, she's like on call 24/7.
What was the finances?
Pardon?
What was the finances?
It's tourism.
Tourism, that's it.
Let's see.
Okay, tourism.
You know you get, you know you getting old when you have to have two pair of glasses.
Tourism council.
On page 35. Yep, that comes under the, all right, let's see.
Oh, tourism.
Yeah, 85, 45, yeah. He removed that.
35, how much?
And, yeah.
85, page 35.
85, 465. So, and I have no clue, I was not consulted at all about how he wanted to do with that. I think that, well, I don't know. I had heard some, I had heard some rumors, but I'm not going to even discuss that out. But anyway, I think that Cheryl does a good job. She works very hard. She's very knowledgeable. She knows the people, she knows the town, she knows the players. And I think we ought to believe it just like she is. I think we ought to not bother her job, I think.
He didn't put it in his totality, he just decreased it, right?
No, he put her job.
Period out.
The change.
And if you look at the planning and development, he put a $34,000 tourism coordinator.
Yeah, I think that he wanted to just hire somebody totally else in tour, in the planning and development and putting it back on. So I'm not for that.
Just put it back.
I'm not, that's not my recommendation.
If you look on page 30, 38, he says Center for Commerce Tourism, 79, 850, he removed. And maybe the, as American Business Association, that 4, 4,600, maybe that's the total of 84, maybe 100. Do you see? It's 21, page 30.
I picked up my wrong budget, I had a note signed.
National, when we're on the tourism budget, are we allowed to look at it, national advertising, $70,000? Media buying for advertising, marketing for Jam 94.7?
Uh-uh, that's, he's, no, that's, was there a fund at? National advertising for Jam? How do you nationally advertise locally?
$70,000.
No, uh-uh. Well, you know what he's been doing, he's been getting on that in Bad Mountain, honestly.
I'm not sure. Do we look at tourism, is that our?
Yeah, that's under the planning.
Yeah.
Tourism. It sure is. The everything is ours, everything is the council's. We are the ones that set the budget, we can look at anything we want.
Amphitheater Riverfront Park, we're looking at an additional $30,000. Riverfront Park Amphitheater, cause playground development, Riverfront Park, first development.
That comes under Parks and Recreation.
He has it under tourism, the budget.
Why does he have it? Well, then let's look at it. Maybe he decided to change it, but we'll have, I'll ask Cory about that. I wish Cory had been able to come today, I didn't know he wasn't coming.
And so are we, in the end of, I've actually, let me look, I think it's page 30, I dropped the page because I did have a couple of questions about our planning and development budget before, unless I had an opportunity to ask.
Oh, you know what? They have moved tourism to not be under community development anymore. It's under the same thing, it's something else, it's under the cemetery thing, it's never mind, it's not our.
So we can't?
But, yeah, but let me tell you something.
Because it just says tourism, it's not cemetery, it's just tourism.
Well, uh.
Saying that this has died, tourism has died.
You know, we're moving stuff around to keep it to, you know, to keep it where, but let me tell you something, they think I'm not going to meddle with this stuff, but think twice. We're not, we're not going, we're not changing Cheryl Smidley's job, wherever it is. I don't care if they want to budget it in the Trade Commission. It's still going to go over to, just like it is, as far as I'm concerned. Or rather, it's by any other name.
I'm going to get back to that, to that.
All right, so we'll just go back to planning and development. So, all right.
I have a portion under there. I'm sorry, I flipped that off. Okay, planning and development, we have three welcome center, center attendants appear to be, one is, or three are full time, then we have a director, a project compliance office, and a tourism coordinator. So have we always had a tourism coordinator in the planning?
Well, yes, but she wasn't allowed to do her job, if I'm just going to say that.
And so, she's still, currently we have two people, is that correct? In planning and development, the director and the compliance officer. So he's one, two, three, four, he's suggesting that we need to hire all four back.
Um, well, we need some folks for the welcome center.
We need some people, have the welcome center open on the weekend.
Absolutely we do, and we need to have contract workers to do that. Actually, I think we could do the welcome center with contract workers all the time, because we could do something totally different. That welcome center could generate a lot of funding. It could generate a lot of funding. In fact, I've got some ideas for that. We need to have a little, we need to have, at James Perkins Park, we need to have a little, somebody sitting water and drinks and chips and sandwiches for the seating.
That'd be a fun generation right after. I saw a group coming back into Selma today, a group, but it looked like it was about 15, taking a picture at the bridge, on the bridge.
They always have, or we could have food truck. And anyway, well, that's something that we can comment later. But we can have, one of the things that we need to do, we don't need to get in the weeds and all that, but we do need to have the welcome center open, it needs to be open on the weekend. And I do happen to know that the people that are very familiar with the running of that are willing to work on the weekends under contract.
Yes, ma'am.
The people who normally work there.
Yes, ma'am.
And know it very well. Um, we can do the whole thing under contract, and I think that's probably what we need to do, but we'll see how the rest of the council feels about that. Um, what do you think about that, Councilwoman Shore?
If we can cut that 150,000 wages down, power into a contract and get the same service, I think.
Yeah. Well, when you have somebody that doesn't need the insurance, and doesn't, you don't need to do the fringes, and if you've got two tired workers, they're on the Medicare, they don't need the, you know, they don't need the fringes, and you've got somebody who has a job somewhere else that's just on the weekend, they don't need, no, you just do the, and during the week, you've got the contract, that's all you had anyway. That's just fluff so you can move money. You know, that's the look, it takes somebody blind, crippled, and crazy to not see what's been done. They have these numbers so that they can move money that's not used to not spend.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to bring your attention, Councilwoman, to special projects, $458,000, T21 maintenance. I'm not sure, that's page seven on the plan.
Yes, yes, uh-huh.
Development budget, $30,000, oh, excuse me, $30,000 for the T21, do you know what that is?
T21 magnets? No, I do not. And say with Henry, with Mr. Thompson.
Are they in here? And then amphitheater maintenance, $128,000, where can we get that amount?
I would, now, I'm just guessing here, I'm just kind of, oh, it says painting and roof and AC. So that is probably really for finishing things that never were completed, because I don't know if you're aware. Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. I think that there were a lot of things that were not, you know, they had changed it, and a bathroom wasn't done there like it was supposed to be. The amphitheater's got a lot of problems, that's why it's not used like it's supposed to be. But we need to have some kind of big fundraiser down there so we can do, you know, get a bathroom, a fundraiser for all of this.
Let me ask about this. It says grant match, and I know a lot of that is planning and development. It has a $400,000 that's proposed, but it still has the splash pad in it. Are we, are we still doing the splash pad?
Uh-uh. No, splash pad's gone.
That's $75,000 that can be removed from it, because it's increased actually by $59,000.
There again.
That $75,000 doesn't have to be there. I don't know if they looked at their explanation, or if they just pulled a number at the top of there, that's page eight.
Okay.
I'm not so sure the splash pad is gone.
Oh, you're not, okay.
I think Henry needs to be here to look at it.
Well, I think you're right, I think we need to just ask, you're exactly right. We'll ask him at the work session.
I think there were some concerns about the specification, but the concern was if we turn down this ramp, it may be hard pressed to get future grants. Since we already have a warrant.
Yeah, well, that, you know.
Do they just hold them over for years, do you?
No, they don't, not at all.
I'm not sure.
But what's, if you, no, there's a way to do it. If you turn the splash pad back in, if you send a letter and say that due to a change in design, due to infrastructure problems, which we do have serious infrastructure problems, that I don't know that, you know, there's some suggestions by some people in public works that have been in public works that would create some problems.
That's it, what we need to do is make it.
Uh-huh. But anyway, yeah, so I expect him to be there for, we're going to have to, I tell you, I'm just going to have to say that we're just going to need to hold this over, we're going to have to.
Because we can't answer any questions.
Without handling stuff, yeah. Um, yeah, but.
At least we were able to meet with our partners and give an ideal assessment of what they need and what they desire, and then we can make sound judgments.
Would it be any problem for you to get here, say, we're having, the work session's going to be early on Monday. gonna be early on Monday, I know it's a problem for you to.
I thought the budget hearing at four.
Yeah, budget hearing, before the work session. Well, I tell you what, we'll just take this up as a part of the budget hearing, so that'll just be fine.
Hopefully, our partner will be there.
Right, yeah. Any other comments, questions, suggestions?
Miracle got their money, said, more months to come. I do know I was in this Wade office Wednesday, and she put in a call to the federal coordinator of Montgomery, and she told this Wade that they had put three checks in the mail, one told her thirty-some thousand, and the other two was twenty-seven thousand, and then apparently they got another check just this week, maybe yesterday, for ninety-five.
Okay, are they doing their reporting and stuff like they're supposed to do, you know, I had understood at one time I had gotten.
I think, I think.
I think that had been an issue.
What I found out was, the N C A N support was the whole back, and it was on the housing authority, not the city's. See, everything was in place except for the N C A N.
I got you.
And they had requested the housing authority to give whatever document, but the housing authority was kind of late in doing it, but I think they have, they can give them what they need, so they can get the money to start coming.
Got you. I see, well, that's with you, to get this to your baby, get her some of her eyes. Is this coming so quick?
Yeah, she actually, she's calling in her door, let me see if I can reach her, she's calling, sitting up here, so she must be out, it's her daughter calling first, and then she called.
I bet you.
It's out.
Well, of course, and thank you so much for being here, you've been so faithful to come every single day, and you're the most learned county member we've got, I guess.
Okay, she's at home resting, okay, I, I, okay, thanks.
Did y'all ever get a chance to catch?
She said, she's at home resting.
Another department, it's a picture.
Ma'am.
Is there a magnet eight thirty percent wind off square?
Yes ma'am.
To launch?
In the morning, that's Monday morning, Monday morning.
What is that?
I don't care if we quit.
Oh.
I heard something, I remember a question in the air, she had on, and she asked a question, was, do they have anything, except they have.
I will consider, I will say, except the account, we are not allowed to, just so you can send out any checks unless we have all placed, including, however, because we've seen someone, we sent out a letter, a check, and could pay, unless we put the check, we see, and you are on the table, that's what makes it out, and good, thank, that, I was saying, I can't wait to see what they're doing. And it's also, we said, give them, that, that, something has happened, I'm just, we got here for, of course, of course.
I ain't got no reason, I don't want to be in a, I don't want to be in a little bit.
I'm telling you, I heard that everything was in the.
Okay, please, I want to see how many, what would it be, that nine and four thousand cover, and if it covers, and then, and then, you know.
Well, there was the check, that's what I was asking.
She said we have sent out a check.